Okay, this is the Wasika School Board Work Session for February. And it is Thursday, February 1st, 2020, floor. It's 5:30 PM and we're in the central building, second floor conference room. And our work session tonight will consist of three items. First one, staff spotlight. Second one is Apt to G website, all right? And the third one will be our junior high, high school registration. So first up tonight, we have Mr. Joseph Hedivar, who is our activities director. And Joe's gonna talk a little bit about high school activities and a little bit about the Minnesota State High School League. And also, I passed out kind of a makeshift, some information on the Minnesota State High School League that I thought you can look at or look at later, or take home, or whatever. So, Joe?
Sure. Well, thanks for having me, everybody. And you know, when Dave and Eric told me that I was gonna be part of the staff spotlight tonight, I kinda thought, wow, they must be short of staff to chat with. But yeah, thanks for having me. Just talk a little bit about how things are going, at least in my department at the high school. I think I looked at it today when we first got in this morning. At this point in the school year, sorry, I'm trying to pull up this quick little Google Doc that I made. We've had 457 individual registrations. That's not duplicate. That's not people playing two sports. That's just fall and winter, single registrants. So we're on a really good pace right now with registration numbers. Obviously, you know, we don't gauge our success in wins and losses. The wins are always nice for our programs and our activities and things like that. But we're always looking for other issue, or not issues, I guess, other ways to gauge success. And some of the highlights that we've had, obviously, we had kind of a crazy start to our volleyball season this year with that unfortunate incident that we had and how the girls were able to respond to that. And the coaches responded to that and our community and our people responded to that was just absolutely amazing. That was just a blessing for us to be able to respond and come back and get those girls back to playing volleyball and get them back to some normalcy. That was just something I was really proud of, to be able to get those girls back and playing volleyball in two weeks or so. It was absolutely amazing to me. I guess I should probably mention too that in June of 2023, we won the Class AA Boys State Track and Field Championship with, I believe it was six or seven athletes there. One of the smallest contingents of runners there, but we were still able to win the state championship up in St. Michael. So that was kind of an exciting start to the summertime for us. Along with that, we had two girls, Stalomnivet and Calidufault, go to the state cross-country meet. And we had, sorry, Joe Felkamp go to, or sorry, Isaac Felkamp. That's why I wanted to check, because I wanted to make sure I had the right Felkamp, because I confuse them all. We had Isaac Felkamp go to the state cross-country meet, representing our boys as well. We also had the football team make a state tournament appearance again for the first time in a couple of years. And we've got a lot of exciting stuff going on right now in our winter programs. Wearing a sweatshirt from Hockey Day Minnesota, our hockey day, our team just got back from Hockey Day. Probably one of the most premier hockey events in the state of Minnesota. It was just an absolute thrill to think of this little rinky-dink town in southern Minnesota. Rinky-dink, well, we're bigger than Warroad, but up there, hockey is life. But to be able to have us go up there and experience that culture and that climate and have our kids be able to go out and play hockey outside was just an amazing experience for our kids. And we were just so grateful for it. And our kids represented themselves well up there in that just awesome opportunity. As far as other things go, gymnastics, we have one of our best gymnastics teams in recent memory right now. They are ranked right now in the top 20 of Class A in the state of Minnesota. Their average scores are about around a 134 at this point. And with a couple little improvements here, we might have a chance to get some, some girls through to the state meet. And that would be obviously really exciting for everything else. As far as that's kind of highlights of how this year's been going. As far as the Minnesota State High School League goes, they're really just kind of a, they're basically like, I don't wanna say a governing body, but they're the overseeing organization. I guess they would be a governing body for us in how we go about our rules and regulations and our policies and how we go about scheduling games and contests and things like that. Basically, everything we do inside of our policies would be in line with what Minnesota State High School League does. If we don't follow those rules and policies, then we would put ourselves in danger violating our agreement with the Minnesota State High School League. And the reason why this organization was put together, I think they're well over 100 years now old, would be because it was, it was designed to create a fair and equitable climate for high school athletics and arts and activities throughout the state of Minnesota. So by having this set list of rules and regulations, bylaws and guidelines that we follow, it really creates an equal playing ground, or playing field, I should say, across the entire state for every school. No matter what, if you're public, if you're private, if you're a charter school, if you're an online school, everybody has the same set of rules and policies, or at least they're supposed to. And that's kind of what the Minnesota State, Minnesota State High School League oversees. So that's kind of all I really.
Thing I would add about the high school league is that high school league is governed by, there's an executive director, includes a board. And the board consists of a variety of administrators from throughout the state. There are two superintendents on there, one from greater Minnesota, one from the metro area as well as, which we get regular reports from, our MASA reports plus AD representation, as well as principals and other folks on there. And then each district has a board member representative whose job is to kind of basically stay abreast of what's happening with high school league and report back to all of you, should there be anything significant to note. So I feel pretty comfortable that although the high school league is kind of a juggernaut that just kind of runs as they, as they go at times, they do, they do also a pretty nice job of gathering input from districts to the best they can and then making it work. So it's, it's a little bit of, at some points, a little bit of, this is our option. I don't know of any districts in the state of Minnesota who choose to go non-high school league and then what do you go? Who do you play? So it's a little bit of, what do you do? But at the same time, it serves us well.
Yeah.
Questions for Joe?
And just going off of what Eric said, every single piece of information that you hear going in front of the executive board of the Minnesota State High School League has been run by us in some way, shape or form as ADs. Now, I sit on a board or a committee called the Region 2A Committee. Well, Region 2A is all of the small schools in south central Minnesota. So we get together at Happy Chef in, in Mankato, once every, what is it? Three months for two to three hours in the morning. And we go through all these different things. And we break down into subcommittees and we talk about each individual thing. And then our subcommittee votes yes or no on this, or how we feel on this. And I might just get outvoted just in that. And then they say, yes, we're gonna recommend moving this forward and bringing this forward. So I do feel like I do always have some sort of input. If it's something that I feel very strongly about, I happen to reach out to people that I know on those committees and people in a little bit more power. But a lot of times, it's just little things like, you know, do we add an extra minute to a hockey game or something like that? And I just feel like those are arbitrary, little silly things that people have a lot of time to worry about. So I probably just offended a hockey person, me being a hockey person, but.
No, like the shot clock. Shot clock come along. Now that was something that came out of the high school league or how did that, how did that all come about?
The shot clock thing kind of, I think, can be directly attributed to us here in Wasika. Because of that basketball game that we had, I don't even remember what year it was. I remember Marshall came out and they said the only way we were gonna be able to beat us, this was a girls' basketball game, was we were gonna have to hold the ball the whole game. Well, we got up, we got up like 12 to 6 or something like that. And Coach Conway Jones at that time said, well, you guys aren't even guarding us. We're just gonna stand here. We're already winning. What are we gonna do? And they wouldn't come within, I think it's a five-foot rule or something like that where you have to dribble the ball. And they wouldn't come within that. So our players just stood there. And that wound up being all over social media and that wound up being on national news. And I think ESPN picked it up. That was the second or third time we were on ESPN in the last 10 years. But that was kind of the thing that really get the impetus behind it. And then you started to hear more and more and more about it. And each year, probably it took about one to two years after that, but then each year, it would come up in our meetings. And then that would come up, okay, do you approve shot clock? Or how do you feel about adding the shot clock? Well, the first year was, yeah, I think it's maybe time to start looking at it, but we need more information. We need information about what, what is the actual cost gonna be per school? What are the concerns? How many people does it take to operate it? Also, what are going to be the regulations? Do you need to be a NASA engineer to try to figure out how to, if the ball's in the cylinder or not? And things like that. So we just needed more information before we actually got a real good understanding of the rule. Once we got a good understanding, it seemed like there was quite a bit of support. There was a lot of people who also felt like this was unnecessary. It was one more thing to bring. But after being almost all the way completely through our first year here with it in Minnesota, I think it's been a tremendous, tremendous addition to the, to the basketball games. We haven't had any problems at home with it. We haven't had any issues. I think it's been great. People that have been to the games have commented on how much they enjoy it more. And, and it's, it's a lot of fun. So it went through that whole process and went to the region committees. The region committees brought it up to the, to the state committee. I'm sure the superintendents were talking about it a little bit.
We did. We had to give some input.
Yep. So it goes through all these checks and balances before it even gets to the executive board.
But that's some, that's some, that was just an example of something that the state high school league.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And, you know, we were, the fact of the matter is, we're probably one of the only states that wasn't using a shot clock. We were one of the few that wasn't using a shot clock at, at this, this point.
Regarding planning the activities, is it you or do you have a team or how does it work? And when you need to start to plan for next year?
Planning for next year? I'm working in two years always. So I'm, in fact, today I was just working on scheduling again. I'm scheduling officials for next year already. I'm scheduling games for next year already. So basically, like, if it's winter season right now, like it is, I'll be scheduling games for next winter and scheduling officials for next winter already. So that's always going on a year in advance. Once we get our, our athletic schedules done, then we sit down in May and sit down with our fine arts advisors and we go through the fine art schedules. And we make sure that there's no corresponding dates or any issues. And it's never going to be perfect. We try so hard. And we will bend over backwards and it's never perfect. There's always going to be some little thing or one, there's gonna be a rain out or a snow day or something. And then it just turns into a massive headache. It's never going to be perfect. But we're always working about a year in advance on scheduling things. And it's usually me. More and more of our coaches have decided to get more hands-on with their scheduling. But usually, most of them will just say, hey, send me a list of who you wanna play for next year. We'll get them on the schedule. We'll get them figured out. I usually do most of that work for them. Yeah, no problem.
Can you explain the difference between athletics, activities, clubs? And do you, do you mostly just deal with athletics and like, yeah, can you kind of explain? Cause I feel like, I mean, 457 registrations, that would be for athletics.
Yes.
And so then, obviously, we have a lot of kids involved in lots of other.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's something that I've really been, when I came into this position, I don't even know what it is, 10 or 11 years ago, I didn't really have a firm understanding of that either. And I, it sounds weird to say, I'm still not sure that I have an understanding of how it works in our district yet. And you and I have exchanged some emails about that. We have athletics, which is pretty cut and dry. We know what that is. And then we have activities, which would be, at least from what I would see, would be things like FFA, robotics. We call it the art team. Those sort of things would go in there. I would even argue, you know, BPA and DECA, all of those kind of programs that we have. And then the fine arts would be obviously one-act play, drama, band, choir, those sort of things. They all have different fees. They all have different fee structures. And what we found out was the funding sources and how all of those are being pulled in. And we're starting to learn a little bit more about that too as, as well. So they're all kind of, while I help manage them, traditionally in the past, it's been more of the high school principal that takes the fine arts and the activities. And I'm just dealing with athletics. But I've always been more than willing to help out.
And then clubs would kind of be more like, whatever faculty advisor is running.
Correct. Yep, correct.
And there's two types of clubs. So just remember that, keep in mind. So there's, there's basically school sanctioned clubs. And those advisors would be in, in the extracurricular schedule, the contract that they're paid to have an advisor for a particular club.
Like student council or something.
Right, right. And, but we also do permit students to do student-driven or student-led clubs, which then they're doing something on their own. But we might provide a supervisor to, to make sure the students are safe. But they're not leading or participating in the group. They're just kind of there for that option. So, so there's, in the back of our, the teacher contract is pretty, actually pretty clearly calls out, these are the clubs that the school does. Anything beyond that, students are welcome to do. They just would be on their own. Yeah. It's a, be a lot of opportunities for students.
Yes.
And I would argue that you do more with the fine arts and activities than you, than you're, you're saying right now. Because I think about the example of just, was it just this fall, we had to move something to Sunday because of the, oh, because of the state tournament for football.
Yeah.
Moving the indoor, indoor marching to Sunday. And it's a lot of work that goes into the scheduling. And you say it's never perfect, but it usually worked to the public looks pretty smooth. So good job on that.
Thank you. Is there a lot of, is there anything like a new up and coming that you've seen out there that's had a lot of requests? As far as activities go?
Activities, athletics.
The one I'm starting to hear more and more and more about would obviously be boys volleyball. With that being approved for MSHSL play, I believe, starting, I think this year is its first official year. I'd have to go back and double-check that. I've had a couple people ask me about it. There would have to be some things for our community that we'd have to look at and figure out to see if it would be a good fit for us. But that goes through phases too. Because when I first started, it was lacrosse. When are we gonna get lacrosse here? And now it's, it's boys volleyball. And I heard, well, you know, if we would have had boys volleyball in 2021, imagine how good we would have been with that boys basketball team we had. So.
What about girls wrestling?
Girls wrestling, I, we just need girls out. Absolutely. We have, yeah, I wanna get that going. We have to, you know, we have to get girls involved in wrestling. I don't even know. Darren, maybe you can tell me, do we have girls down in the room right now?
Five youth, one will be passed on to seventh grade next year. You know, and that brought up a thought for us is can, being that we don't have a full team and I know how you gotta kind of stick with your school district, like Janesville, Waterville group, their high school together to get their numbers. Is that something you can do as a girls too with the surrounding committee?
Yeah.
Communities?
We could definitely look at it, but that'd be a conversation for a different time.
Right. But you know what? Just, that is a big, you know, Dave brought it up. And that's, that's kind of the fix at that time until you get enough enrollment.
I'm 100% supportive of, of girls wrestling. We've got six girls from Marshall over in our gym right now, wrestling.
Well, you don't have to go very far south here and you've got some girls that are wrestling already.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And you know, I think part of the problem we have in our community with that is we, we've got so much. You could argue that we have too much for a school in our community, our size. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but we just stretch our kids out so much. I don't know that we, we could afford to add one more thing. But if we take it, and what a lot of schools are doing is they're taking their, their wrestling team and then they're just bringing the girls along with it. And then you have these standoff or standalone, I guess, I should say, girls wrestling events that they go to. Like I just got information about the girls wrestling section tournament in Redwood Falls. Now, this year, we don't have any girls that are wrestling, but I would be more than happy to send our girls out there.
If you can get the numbers, it's, it's growing.
Absolutely.
I mean, they're, the youth side of it.
And for us, adding a girls wrestling program is easy, because we have the equipment. We have everything we need. We might have to order different cut uniforms, obviously. But that'd be a good problem to have.
Would you, one more, do you, would there, what would be, do you see a lot of our kids or a good group of our kids leaving our district to go do activity or sport in other districts?
I can't, I can't think of a, I can't think of a single one that I would say that was a huge, huge, huge deal to lose that person.
Well, no, no, I'm saying they're still in our district, but being that we don't provide the activity.
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah.
Is there other ones out there?
Yeah.
That's the only one probably that we're not the host.
So you're saying that they're leaving?
Are we just, are they going to?
They go shoot in New Richland or Janesville. Now, with that being said, this year, adaptive bowling. That's because we don't have a bowling alley. We have some serious momentum behind getting the trap program up and going in Wasika. This is the most serious momentum I've ever seen. I've got a staff member who is, who has offered to be, and I apologize if I don't have this terminology right, the range safety officer, which you need somebody there for that. We have at least two staff members who said they'd be involved in some way, shape or form with it. And we have another community member who is very seriously considering being the coach. I need commitments from them before we can get the word out to our kids and say, hey, this is a go. The Sportsman's Club has already told us we can shoot there. We're just have to figure out the, figure out the, the scheduling and the timing of everything and work with the Janesville team that shoots there. But I think we're gonna meet next week and hopefully we're gonna get our trap team going this year.
How many kids do you need to make a team, do you know?
I don't think there's any requirement. Yeah. Yeah.
That's pretty much an individual sport, right?
There are, there are team competitions too. I, I can't tell you how it works.
I think that's one of the highest enrollment.
It is. It is. It's huge. And there's only one, there's only one media year that if you qualify for, you travel to, and that's in Alexandria. The rest of them are right at your, at your home site and you just compare scores. So, but we're close. I hope we can get it done.
Good.
When is spring registration start, do you know?
You're the second person to ask me that today. So I was looking at the calendar. I don't know that there is a good, there's a good fit for it between precinct caucuses and all that other stuff that's going on. There's just not an open day. So registration's gonna open up probably in the next two weeks or so. And then we're gonna have our meeting probably on a Sunday night. That's probably what we're gonna have to do to try to avoid a night where, I think it's like March 4th. Is that, I don't even know if that's a, I think that's what I thought. I looked at it. I don't know.
It's a leap year, so I'm all confused with this.
Yeah, leap years gave me too. All right. Anything else?
Well, I was just gonna tell a quick story. It's related to the Minnesota State High School League. Couple of weeks ago, I was doing tickets to one of the basketball games and there was a guy there. And he had a bunch of credentials on him and, and I didn't know who he was and he started talking to me. And so I struck up a conversation with him and his name is John Molea. And he is the, he's a journalist that travels the state for the Minnesota State High School League and covers anything and everything that has to do with Minnesota State High School League activities in the state of Minnesota. And he was in Wasika because one of the Jackson County Central players was hurt in a football game last fall. And he, he has recovered from his injuries and he's just started playing basketball. And evidently, he's a pretty good athlete, pretty good kid and all that. So he kind of wanted to write a story about him, which he has done here in the last few days. So we, we talked several times. I would say one time, we might have talked for 10 or 15 minutes. Very nice man. What I'm trying to get to is he spoke very, very highly of Wasika, the school, our community, our coaches, our teams, our sportsmanship, all of that. And how much he enjoyed coming to Wasika for any reason at all. He gave Joe a pat on the back for the good work that he does. So it was kind of, it was just an interesting experience that just kind of happened out of the blue. But said some really good things about Wasika Public Schools, so.
Yeah. He's a, he's a great advocate to have. He's a wonderful person. What he does for student athletes is absolutely amazing. And, and we're lucky to have people like him that go out and, and really just kind of highlight what happens in the world of high school sports, because a lot of times you only hear the negative, you don't hear the positives. And there's so much more positive going on than there is negative. And we're just blessed that he likes coming here, because he's been here at least once a year, ever since he started these.
That for, I think he said he's had this job since 2010. I said, what'd you do before that? Well, I was a sports writer for the Minneapolis Star Tribune. Oh, you worked with Sid Hartman? You bet. Worked with Patrick Royce? You bet. I know him well.
I never even asked him.
It was kind of interesting to talk to somebody that had worked with people like that and what they were really like. And, and I remember asking him about Patrick Royce. And he said he's like as good of sports writers as there is in the whole country. So spoke very, very highly of him. But he said he wouldn't needle Sid Hartman all the time. Sid would take the bait. And I don't know if you guys know much about sports writers up in the Twin Cities, but there are a couple of legends there. So, well, thank you, Joe. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Good deal. All right.
Thanks, guys. See ya.
Yep. Take care. Okay, Eric, Apt to G.
So tonight, I wanted to take, take some time to showcase a couple of things that we have coming up in the next few weeks here in the district that are pretty exciting in terms of some of our communication and things that are going on in our buildings. And so our website is, is one of our key communication tools with our district. And however, right now, the way things are working, right now, we're trying to communicate with multiple different, with families in multiple different ways, whether it's a text communication, it's social media, it's on the website, all those, a phone call, different ways. And that right now is relatively clunky in terms of how that works. We have to go to something separate to do all of those things. So I give a lot of credit to Brian Herring and the technology team. We've been exploring the last year plus, an opportunity to be more efficient with our communication. And we, we came across Apt to G, which is a company that does communications and website management. And they're looking to streamline communication for school districts to be much more efficient in, in how they do things. And so we had a chance to sign on with them. The, the good news is it's, it's cost neutral to us. It just costs us the same as our Blackboard did before. We're just switching to a new forum, which is more up to date, which is pretty exciting. And so they've developed for us a new website that they'll be hosting. Changing the, the website management will be, changing the website. Um, changing the, the website management um, will be, changing the website will be much more convenient for our staff. In our buildings, it's a lot more user friendly, you've been in there and checking it out. And I wanted to show you a little bit how that looks, looks tonight. So if you click on the website there, Caitlin, so this will be what the website looks like. And what you'll notice there is it looks a lot like our current website, it's not a lot, not a lot different. But one thing that's really interesting, I think is really powerful is Caitlin, scroll all the way to the bottom. And that's the bottom. So we don't have right now this big lengthy um, tool that has links like four pages down that you can hardly even get to. And you don't know where things are buried. When we, when, when they migrated material or uh, content from our current website to this new website as the. When they're, when they did it, we had literally thousands of dead links and dead pages that didn't come over. Um, and that is just a matter of, of time with a, with a website forum that yeah, those things weren't showing, but they're hiding in the background, just taking up time. And I shared, I showed the page to our administrators and said, okay, what, what didn't come over that you really need? And the answer was nothing, I mean, nothing, okay, we don't need any of those anymore. So we kind of got to scrub clean, which is kind of exciting for our website. And so um, just, just for the sake of, of example, if you scroll down just a little bit to the first menu right there, you can see infinite campus, login. Community add dining menus, these are things that actually families, community members want to see. Like right there, right for the top, what's my lunch menu going to be tomorrow? That's what I use the website for more than anything else, what's for lunch? You figure out that is um, events, if you go down a little bit, uh, news and live feed will be all there as well. Coming across and then of course, towards the top there, sorry again, your vertical going up and down, but. Schools, you can go to the particular buildings, the menu has some of the things we've had before. Uh, if you click on the three bar menu or your left, you can just kind of see. But there's our menus, you can click into departments and such, so not much crisper and cleaner. Um, I'm pretty exciting for me. Uh, what I think is the most powerful piece of the new format though is if you go into what's called drill share there Caitlin. The, up on the top left, that other tab. Yep, so this is kind of the behind the scenes piece. So this will be what it looks like when it says media and you see live feed, news, events, staff, documents. So I have the opportunity then as the user from a district perspective and our building leaders will as well to type the message. Click the top line, I want it to go to Facebook, I want it to go to our live feed, I want it to be a text message and I want it to be a phone call to parents. Click, 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 send and it goes. And it's just, and it's just out there. So I think about a snow day, takes me right now about 20 minutes to get through all the different communication pieces. Got to get it on Facebook, got to send a phone call out, got to get this voice message out. It's all a one stop shop for us right now, just pretty, pretty exciting. So it's pretty neat to see the behind the scenes look at it. And then as of um, next week, I'll take our leadership team through this and they'll be able to make sure that their seat, their sites are all up to date as well. Uh, one more thing that I thought was really neat, if you go back to the website Caitlin, go and then you go to the homepage and translate. Put, put it in Spanish for us. And there it goes, boom, just like that. And the whole page is now in Spanish and everybody can just have the website, you know, as they, as they need to. So, so pretty good stuff um, to be able to be um, supportive of our entire community and really communicate. And then the last piece, this is the piece that's going to be not new, but probably new to most users. Because I don't, I don't know that I've had one question about it in what, over three and a half years now in the district is the Wasika Public Schools app. So the Wasika Public Schools app now has been updated uh, in such a way that it's going to be much more user friendly. And you have that YouTube link, I think Chuck emailed it back to us. And so would you be able to pull that up and look at that link? And so right now in the app store, it's live, um, you can, you can find the Wasika Public Schools app. And we're going to look at a demo here in just a moment, but it just, it um, hard to see it, we'll look at the demo there, there you go.
Introducing the brand new app for Wasika Public Schools. It's everything Wasika Public Schools in your pocket. This is the home screen, tap the three horizontal lines in the bottom left to see all the menu items. To turn on push notifications, tap settings, select notification preferences and allow notifications. Tap subscriptions to subscribe to your school. The event section shows a list of events throughout the school. You can use this button to add an event to your calendar or tap here to share the event with friends and family. The feed is where you'll find updates from administration about what's going on throughout the school. Whether that's celebrating a student's success or reminding you about an upcoming deadline. Search Wasika Public Schools in the app store or play store to explore the app for yourself. It's everything Wasika Public Schools in your pocket.
And so one of the things that I think was really interesting there is the great example was if you looked at the events and it had Martin Luther King Day and President's Day. And that was it. So we won't, we want that not to be all, it's it. So, so I was talking with principals earlier this week on, you know, when's the fifth grade band concert? You know, when is conferences coming up? When is um, when is the honors night? That you think as a superintendent, I would know when that was, like the honor, those kind of things, right? And those, those now, the expectation is that those will be on there. And we'll still have our activities calendar that, that Joe monitors through the Big South Conference and that sort of thing. That's it, but as far as events go, this should be on here now. And, and just today I was peeking through like today on the app, um, the dining menu wasn't coming through, right? I emailed them, he had it fixed in like 20 minutes and he had it up there now and connected. And so I think it's, it, well, I shouldn't say I think, I'm pretty confident. It's going to really help the way we communicate quite a bit. Uh, just to be more efficient and be more effective um, in our communication with families. Um, what I love about the app and just an app in general. And I, this is, this is both for myself, but for all of us as a district. The app increases the accountability for us to keep things current and keep them up to date. A website, you can, well, I updated that last week, I don't need to worry about it right now. You know, you don't always get back to it, but if you got people looking at the app regularly, plus like kind of like your parent portal for infinite campus. Teachers make sure that's up to date as often as they can, right? So the app will also do the same thing. So I'm excited about it, I think it'll be a positive thing for us. The website change um, should happen here at the end of this week. Um, it won't change the, right now that's the test website, but you'll go to Wasika Schools and it'll, it'll be the same domain name and everything. So it won't be hardly any different to a parent experience other than hopefully better communication moving forward with that, so. I'm excited about it.
Who will be responsible to ensure that data is updated on the website and on app?
So currently, right now, all the building and departments are in charge of their own website information. And that is what is going to continue uh, with my oversight to make sure that gets up to date regularly. Um, right now, um, there's so much on there that it just gets muddy as to who's doing what. But as of like, for example, I looked at, we'll look at registration here in just a moment. Um, when, when they did the migration over, um, you know, it's got last year's registration guide. So Jason and I talked today, Monday morning, it's got to be changed to the, the updated registration guided. And so, excuse me, so we're going to continue our current system um, of that. Pardon me, but make it more efficient for them to do so. Right now it's awfully hard for them to do that because it's just so clunky.
Yeah, because this is a more um, user friendly platform.
Yeah, correct, very much so.
What about their support? I mean, if something is not available or crash or something, do we give support like?
We, we do, we, I mean, we do, our, our, obviously our tech team has, has their. Um, has, has their work done for them or that they can do as well, but also. Aptogy does have tech support 24/7, we can provide for us. Unlimited trainings, we don't have to pay to train people, so we can continue to, I, I didn't quite figure out how to do this with, with, with our previous. Um, previous vendor, they'd offer you so many training slots per however many times. And then if it didn't work, it didn't work. And so um, this is where um, I think this is, this company is about five years old. And, and they really got something here right now and there are um, Lake Crystal, St. Peter, some of our neighbors have also worked with them as well and it's been very positive.
Will, will the app update automatically or do we have?
Should update automatically, yep, and well, you can set automatic updates on your phones, but, but good, but like, let me say that it talks to infinite campus. And there's um, it's just like all the rest of our systems, there's a midnight upload every night, so the rosters and everything will be up to date every night.
Is the, I don't want to get too technical, is the underlying set of source data like the same for the app as it is the website? So for example, if the menu is wrong and gets fixed, is there one spot that our people change and then it changes both the app and the website?
Yeah.
So calendar, menu, as much as possible is probably one source and they both feed off of it?
Correct, right, and primarily because some of those things are external link type things. You know, if you, if you click into, go back to the website Caitlin and then scroll down to dining and just click on dining, you can see. It goes into your Nutrislice, so it goes to Nutrislice from regard, but from the app or the.
So that at least the, the people at the district who have to, who are responsible for updating their part, they have one spot to update that covers both?
Correct, yeah, it should be, it should be, um, well, based on everything we've seen so far, much more efficient. Yeah. I think it's pretty neat.
Yeah, excited.
If we or people have questions or something they're like looking for and they can't find it or that's not updated, that's not right. Do they talk to their building principal or do they?
Yeah, so, yeah, so two points. So first of all, if you're noticing something that's missing or something that's not there, yeah, contact your building principal, your department leader. The video you watched, so that's a part of a marketing um, communication that will go out next Friday to our families. So I, I wanted to give you a heads up here this evening before that changes. So the next Friday, that video will all go out, the next Friday we'll send like a, like a still photo, like a reminder. Mine, download the app if you haven't yet, followed by, they've got like a three week communication cycle to get it out to families. Um, they got some posters we'll print out and put in the buildings like where parents come to pick up kids and things like that. So get the communication going with that, so. Looking forward to it, just looking forward just to refresh, you know, we have. Um, something I've been working on now for, you know, several years, how do we make our website update more efficient than we just haven't found along with our current system? So this will be positive.
So the app is up and running live right now, but not all the information is flowing, okay.
One of the things on our vision card was touches we have with people and I think was it measuring website visits or was it measuring each of campus logins?
So, so yeah, so previous measure was website visits and we figured out that wasn't really, that was hard to figure out from year to year. But then from uh, we, this year we're doing like uh, parents portal accounts, how many students have a parent with an account? Because it could be multiple logins or one login and kind of gathering some of that baseline.
Is there a way we can maybe in, I mean, the website maybe isn't the right mode because people who have downloaded the app or something.
Right. Correct, yeah, all that brought into kind of that measure. All right.
We good?
I think so.
All right. Third item, you're going to talk about junior high, senior high registration?
I just wanted to share that, you know, registration right now is getting going here at our junior, senior high. And something we've talked about last year, but I didn't actually show you was some of the ways that we've updated our registration system for our students at the junior, senior high. Um, I think it's really important to kind of uh, put in, put the visual to some of the work we've been doing um, around registration. So registration guide is an active page on our website. Uh, students go into the parent portal and with their counselors, they're creating their four year plan about how they want to, they get through school and what they want to do. But, but this, this registration guide is something that you can find on the high school page, um, as soon as how to get to that. But there's a lot of important information out here, so if you click on important info there Caitlin, go down to career pathways. I wanted to show you just, this is what the work looks like on career pathways and if you scroll down. So you can see our career fields, our clusters. Um, if students want to go into those various pathways, they can see right then and there how they would, how they would get there. And then to make it even more visual, keep going down, more visually easy. Okay, I'm interested in agriculture, these are the classes I should be considering if I want to go into that field. Because one thing we're not trying to do is, is track a student into something that. I did something with three years and now I don't want to do that anymore now and I'm, what do I do? So it's more along the lines of if you're interested in the arts, here are some classes you should be considering, here are some things you should be doing. Uh, to prepare you for that and you can see, you can see the career pathways we have built out here. Business engineering, manufacturing, working its way down to human services. And then of course. Electives are helpful for all kids, so this is a pretty powerful page when it comes to kids thinking about what they want to do after they leave Wasika Public Schools. If, I mean, it's a, I'm a little bit of a broken record on this, but I want, it's, and we put it on our, on our vision card. Students need to have options for life when they leave here, whether it's one of the three E's, right? Enrollment, enlistment or, or um, employed, whichever of those things they do. We don't, we don't want to direct for kid, that for kids, we want it to be their choice. I don't want to have to go into this by default because I don't have any other options. We want them to know what their options are, know what they need to do to, to get there. And then of course they have to do the work and then if they do the work, then that's where they land at the end of the day. That's pretty important information, I think there. Also, if you go to that important information, one more drop down there Caitlin, go down to graduation requirements. Because it's really easy for kids to see, well, here's what you need to do to graduate from Wasika Public Schools. I mean, here's the, looks like a complicated thing when you start looking at it, especially as a high school kid. They could get that out grade by grade and here's what I gotta do, I have to have my, my years of, of math and science and social studies and. It's all clearly laid out for you. Um, so you can sit down with your, with your parents and, and talk about what you want your, your pathway to look like and, and go from there. Partic, and this is particularly powerful and I, I, um, you know, we'll send this on a social media post probably next week for all families to have this link as well. Because you know, so much of that is, is students at the high school are kind of driving some of this themselves, but want to make sure parents know this is here too. Um, to help support those conversations with your child about what's happening there. Um, and then one last thing on the important info Caitlin is college credit. And you can talk of, and then, then there's information there about how you can get college credit in high school. Advanced placement, concurrent enrollment, of course, PSEO and then how that works. In, in collaboration with your, with your high school credits. And then here's all the connections we have uh, for those opportunities for students. So I think our counseling, our counseling office um, has done a fantastic job of setting this up cleanly and crisply for, for kids to know what they need to do. In terms of figuring out what's happening. Um, something that is, is not new this year, but I don't think I ever showed it to us last year in this format was the course description page. Um, if you go into say the math depart, math department Caitlin, uh, departments have done these, these videos now, um, videos now. Which kids can know, can watch and see about what they're thinking about for school. So if you want, if you just click on the math video on the top there, kind of get a sense of what that looks like.
Students will need at least three years of math to graduate from Wasika High School. It is in your best interest to consider any possible post-high school career paths. As there are many four-year colleges that do require four years of high school math. The math department has classes that will provide a solid foundation for any chosen post-secondary path. This chart, which is in your registration guide, illustrates the most common high school math sequences. If you are in eighth or ninth grade, your current math teacher will help you register for the appropriate math class. It is important to follow the recommendation of your math teacher. Students who deviate from this risk missing an essential class for graduation. Or create a scenario where additional classes are necessary. Once students reach advanced algebra two or algebra two, they will become eligible to take upper level math courses. Many of which give students a chance to earn college credit. The math department has a number of CIF classes with the University of Minnesota. Concurrent enrollment classes with Riverland and AP classes that will give students opportunities to earn college credit. Taking college level classes in the high school setting is a great opportunity for Wasika students. Instead of online learning or lecture dominant and assessment heavy grading. Our classes allow students to have daily access to instruction, in-class test review. Possible retakes and immediate help while still earning college credit.
Senator Hossid, I'm a senior and I'm taking four years of math at Wasika. And one advantage I think is that it's easier to learn in person in a classroom.
And I'm Griffin, I think I'm also taking four years of math here and I'm a senior. And one advantage I like is that it's a lot easier to ask questions in person like with the teacher than having to deal with emailing or the others.
Yeah, so you can kind of see, and each of the departments has a little blurb like that, that kids can watch with their families if they choose and just. Yeah, so you can kinda see, and each of the departments has a little blurb like that that kids can watch with their families if they choose and just kinda get a sense of. And then you scroll down, it goes through all the different classes and the syllabi to each of the classes. And so it's, it's very thorough. And it really gives kids an opportunity to figure out what our track is. One of our vision card measures is on track to graduate in four years. And so as, as students work through their four-year plan with their counselors, this is a really helpful tool to see am I on track to get where I need to go? So that I can choose what I wanna do when I leave high school and not just be left to whatever my, whenever I have the opportunity to get into, if you will, once you get there. So I just think that's, that's something we've been working on for the last couple of years and it really has come to fruition really in the last year. And this, this, this spring particularly, we're really in full motion of providing kids with this information and families with this information. And so I wanted to share it with you all about some of the things that are happening with, and Lawrence and Mr. Marlin are a significant part of that. They do great work working with students and, and their families as well as, you know, high school administration and other staff as well. So. That's why I wanted to share the questions. And other than that, I wanted that to be on everyone's radar. Someone says, like, what are you doing with Career Pathways? Well, we've got quite a bit. And see what's going on there. You know, I can have options.
Question on the opportunities for college credit. When I'm looking on that page, you know, there's the post-secondary enrollment options. And then there's advanced placement and the concurrent enrollment. And when you scroll through to that, it looks like there's a couple Riverland classes, Calculus 1 and Statistics, that says 2024, 25 will be the last year available for concurrent. Is that because we don't have the staffing? Is that because there's not interest? Is it like?
That's likely because Riverland would have terminated them. They're offering that class. And so we'll have to explore another option to be able to provide, another university to partner with to provide that, that option. Yeah. I don't know specifically with that situation, but, but I know that universities come and go with what they offer for IAS classes.
Because those, I mean, that's cheaper for us.
For sure. Or something we wanna do. Yeah.
Do the kids need to do something at home or everything will be done with teachers?
Everything could be done just at school if they wanted to, but I would encourage everyone to talk with their families about what they've got going on there.
I don't know what to do.
Yeah, well, well, they do, they'll do it. And I think what I do, like, I, I know on campus, there's a spot where you can approve their academic plan. But then you've, they've already put it together with their counselors.
Well, and I, I just met with my child and his counselor to kinda look over together what classes he wants to take next year. So we did that in person. Just have a meeting. So that's always an option too. So I think having all of this online helps you kind of flesh out some of those ideas, but certainly meeting with them in person is always an option too.
Like due date to finish it or?
The registration ends, I believe, the third week of February, but that's just a couple of weeks, cuz it hasn't even really, we haven't really seen much communication come out yet about it that I'm aware of.
Just one that was starting.
Yeah. Yeah. And mostly, I mean, I, now I'm speaking a little bit just to myself and my family. I mean, I talk with my, my older kids about, well, what do you wanna do? Okay, now do you know what that, have you talked to your counselor? Have you talked to your teachers? What are you taking? Yeah, okay, that looks good. You know, so it's, it's mostly just being interested and engaged, right? What was going on there for that too?
The same for the seventh and eighth grade or this is a little bit different for them?
Seventh and eighth grade is much more, they take them through that in school, very, very scripted. They take them through that step by step. There's not a lot of, quite frankly, there's not a lot of choice in seventh and eighth grade. It's kinda, here's what you're gonna take and here's, so we learned about the process, learn how to do it. But there's not really a lot of options cuz you're just, you take what the seventh grader takes, right? Yeah. Good questions.
Any other questions? No? Anything else?
No, that's it.
Nothing else tonight? Okay, our next meeting is in two weeks, the 15th, correct? Okay, I guess we're, we're done.
Yeah.